After an incredible Christmas in the creek and a not so incredible town hall meeting, people have questions like what flavor cookies did Juliana give you Jeremy at Christmas in the creek? Well, it might have taken me a little bit of a while to figure it out, but they are molasses. Speaking of molasses, Gary Ashdown has an important question and it's all based on the town hall meeting. He says, what would happen if everybody resigned because of the new regulations? He's talking about Form 6 in Florida. How would the council carry on? Would the state take over? As for the new requirements for the council officials to disclose over here in the UK, we would say they want to know the ins and outs of the duck's backside. What about the molasses side? Um, the polite version says Gary, alright Gary, Form 6 is what's putting everybody in a, uh, an uproar, in a, in a scurry to go, do I really want to serve? Now you have to understand, a lot of these little municipalities, they have individuals that are receiving little to no money. So in Otter Creek, they're getting a hundred dollars a month to sit there in one meeting. Now there are individuals who are doing no extra work whatsoever, such as Don. All he does is he complains. When he could have all that information beforehand, he could do his homework as the residents expect him to do and be prepared, but he doesn't. He just shows up, he creates havoc and chaos and then he gets his hundred dollars. Actually, he gets his hundred dollars before tuxes in his shirt. And there are other individuals that are getting nothing, literally nothing in their municipality. So you have to understand for individuals to actually want to serve when they're getting little to nothing whatsoever and to have all of this personal attack on their privacy all put out there. And I know there are some out there going, well, what does it really matter Jeremy? You pay your taxes. Listen, anything you owe or you own a thousand dollars or more must be documented and it's out on the internet for the world. Okay? Now think of how many things that you own that are a thousand dollars or more. Think of how many things I've found that are a thousand dollars or more. There is no way I want everybody to know what's in my home, what's in my warehouse, what's in my, in my, in my, in my, I have enough people trying to steal from me on a daily basis. I mean, just look at Russ the Suss here in Otter Creek. What would happen to the town hall? If there's not enough people to actually serve, then it goes belly up and either the county or the state comes in. So in other words, I think the state is trying to flush out all of these smaller little towns and, and unincorporate these areas and allow the, the counties to actually care for it. Couple of reasons why I think that. Number one, I think it cuts down on corruption, but here's the other thing to think about. When you put in these rules in these regulations and you have individuals that have amassed some wealth and they done it because they have business knowledge and they actually know how to run things and they know how to be a good steward of money. And then you go, hey, we're going to put all your private information out on the internet. They're going to run away and who's going to come in with the cockroaches, the bottom feeders and they're going to go, well, we don't care. We don't have anything. Let us get our hands on this money in the town of Otter Creek. You've seen that happen already. Russ the Suss, Don the Con, Mary Mary. You had another, you had another candidate try and get in on that open seat that has no business, none whatsoever attempting to try and be on a seat whatsoever. Individual doesn't even own a home to live in, right? So you have these major issues of if you push the good people out, you're going to bring in the bad people and things are going to get worse. So the state trying to push that corruption out may actually increase it. The best case scenario, the town of Otter Creek unincorporates and that doesn't mean Otter Creek isn't Otter Creek anymore. It just means we don't have a council and it still means Christmas in the creek goes on every single year. Most excellent mother says, thanks to Gail for serving on town council. Have a blessed and merry Christmas. Gail was an addition, a very positive addition to town council and we appreciate it, right? Blondie? Blondie appreciates Gail because Gail and Blondie were guarding Santa's workshop and inviting all the kids in and Gail did phenomenal job. Can't wait to serve with her again next season. Addison wants to know, how come all the board members didn't show up for Christmas in the creek? Well, the reality is this Addison, not all of them care about the community. You see that in their, in their nominations, in their voting. You see that in the way they, they address the town council as a whole, or how they approach their position on the town council. They don't care about anybody else but themselves. Now, if Russ the Suss showed up at Christmas in the creek, we would have welcomed him with open arms because it was all about the kids and the joy of serving the community. Don the Con showed up, would have welcomed him with open arms. Mary Mary showed up, we would have told her she could get five gifts for her grandkids if she has them. Although we would have had to do a little check afterwards because we know five to her is most likely like nine. Wanda Hargrove wants to know, isn't this new law? And she's talking about Form 6 in Florida against the fourth amendment? Well, that's a good question. Uh, I'm not a lawyer nor a judge, even though I talk about legal things. There's a difference between knowing the law and actually being a professional in the law. Or example, uh, you know, taking the bar exam, passing, having a license. I don't have those things. So in regards to your question, is it illegal? I don't think it's been challenged yet and that doesn't mean that it won't be challenged. Maybe somebody in the legal profession will challenge it, but as of right now, the law stands. It's, it's in place and as of December 30th, everybody must share all their financial information. Gordon Magock has a question, what's the status on the Russ the Suss and Don the Con thought the state is investigating them? Well, the question is a very good question and as you know, justice is slow. So one of the things that George and I had to do, we had to get down to Florida in a certain amount of time to meet with the state investigator. We could not make it down here in that amount of time because we had to be up in Ohio for different legal trials up there. We finally made it back down and the investigator is making it down here in just a number of days. So schedules are now coordinated again. Investigator will be in Otter Creek all day and we'll be discussing with many different individuals. I'm not the only one. George is not the only one. And, uh, what I can share with you is there's going to be a tremendous amount of information shared with this investigator from videos to paperwork to, to testimony and it's going to go on and on and on. We do know he will be here all day, all day, not only talking to us, but talking to others as well. And this will be a full blown investigation. And also what we know is we're not allowed to film it, even though we asked and we tried and we even said, can we release it later? No, it's not. It's all confident, the entire investigation is confidential. I can talk about there's the investigation, but the investigation and the information contained is confidential until five days after it's closed. Then it becomes public information. Susan Banks wants to know, do you guys think you had a little helping in this new law, Form 6? Because there's been a lot of publicity since your lawsuit. Well, here's what we know. We've encouraged you to call the state attorney. We've encouraged you to call the governor and now we know there's a new law on the books. So do we know that that prompting and the publicity of Otter Creek has done something for the state? There's possibility. Now again, this can go in a positive direction because corruption is trying to be swept out, but the, the negative direction is that nobody like, like me, I'm not going to willingly tell you what I'm worth and where all my worth is stored. I'm not going to tell it to you. That's opening myself up to theft. That's opening myself up to identity theft, personal, physical theft. I'm not going to do it. Do I know how to manage money? I think I do it very, very well. I think God has blessed me to be a wise stewardship of what he has gifted me and for us to actually gift it back to others. But I am not going to run for council in Otter Creek. So if you go Jeremy, but you'd be the perfect person to run for council in Otter Creek. Even your Christmas in the creek had more details and more information that had to be managed and you needed leadership for than the entire town of Otter Creek. And I agree with you. Christmas in the creek did have more information and more details to bring all together than the entire town of Otter Creek. And there were wonderful people who came together to make that happen. I'm still not running and if I'm not running, do you think other quality people are going to run? Probably not. They don't want their personal information out there. So what are you going to get? You're going to get the, whoa, you're, it could get worse. White Fang Moonpa says, hi, I've got one question. Could that council member that stepped down, that would have been Gail, could they have a vote on who could get voted in for the empty seat? Alright, White Fang Moonpa, I see what you're saying. You're saying this member steps down and there were five people. Now there's only four people and there's that empty seat and it's, it's vice mayor and mayor versus Don and Russ, right? It's two and two. Could that fifth person, Gail who stepped down, come in and help vote in the next person? Unfortunately, once you step down, you lose all power that you had in any type of voting situation. So once you resign, you no longer have a say, you no longer have a vote. Gail is now just a member of the community, just like myself and George. Denver Broncos, oh seven, no eighty-seven. Oh boy, that was rough years against the Cleveland Browns. I don't even want to replay that in my mind. Bernie versus Elway. Bernie, Bernie, you remember that George? Oh yeah, we gotta go to the Superbowl. Okay, George does not remember that, but I do.
I have brain fog right now.
Okay, that's okay. That's okay. You're sick, we're all sick, but we still have big smiles. So Don makes a motion and then opposes his own motion. What? Okay. Listen, Don only made the motion so that the conversation could move forward so he could oppose it. Okay? A making a motion of saying, hey, I second the motion. All that does is it furthers the communication forward if we're going by Robert's rules. Robert's rules is motion, second, conversation or discussion, then a vote. I don't particularly like that. And again, it's not legal that they have to follow Robert's rules or parliamentary rule. What I like is conversation and discussion, then a motion, then a second, because this conversation and discussion clarifies what your motion is going to be. So I don't like the aspect that we're making a motion, then a second, then conversation and then a, and then a vote. I like conversation and if you're asking Jeremy, have you ever done that before? Yes, when I had a board and I've had a board as a nonprofit, uh, and I had, I, I was the executive director and I had a president of the board and secretary and vice president, the whole deal. I always had conversation first, then a motion, then a second, then all vote. So if he's just making the amendment to get to the point to push it forward to conversation so he can turn it down, that's what his ploy was. His, his goal was to move it forward to shut it down. Instead of what you would see in healthy boards or healthy councils, they want to communicate, figure it out. They want to, you want to refine what your amendment is. Okay? So you can make a very, very clear amendment, maybe dollar amount, maybe a date. We're going to have on this date and this happens at this dollar amount. We're going to converse about it and then we're going to clarify it. Then we're going to make a motion, a very, very clean and cut and crisp motion and then a second, and then we're going to vote on it. But that never seems to happen. Nothing is clean, cut, clear or concise or even non-corrupt in these meetings, it seems. Sassy Puppy says, step down and lose that $100 a month? Are you crazy? Russ the Suss and Don the Con ain't going to step down and lose that hundred dollars a month? They crinkle all up, put it in their pocket before they even do anything. Don walks out, leaves, then comes back with nothing. I, I, okay, I get it. I get it. I understand what you're saying, Sassy Puppy. There are individuals that don't care about their personal information and it may be because they haven't amassed wealth or it may be because they just don't care about anything but wealth. So they want that hundred dollars a month. Me personally, that hundred dollars a month means nothing in the aspect of protecting all of my information online. I mean, there's plenty of people that constantly are online trying to figure out what George and I are worth. And I can share with you very, very openly and very, very transparently and very boldly, everything online is so wrong, completely and totally wrong. And it's so off, it's ridiculous. Like it is ridiculously off what our worth is. Now, could you imagine if we ran and all of a sudden you saw Jeremy Hales owns this, garbage pail kids worth da, 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 da. And George owns this, her entire Elvis collection is worth da, 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 da. And then Jeremy Hales and George have all of this gold, silver and jewelry and gems and it's worth da, 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 da. I mean, could you imagine all of a sudden that being out there? George and I laugh at what people try and guess of what we're worth right now. Nobody needs to know that private information. No one, no one. You're not privy to it. You're not privy to it because I watch Jeremy and George every day and they put themselves on on YouTube. Therefore I should know everything that they have and every dollar that they make. Nope, doesn't work that way. You're on YouTube right now too. Should we know everything about you? Peter Grimes writes in and says, I'm just wondering something. Can the mayor not second a motion to move things forward? I never see your second emotion. Can someone answer this for me, please? Well, Peter, you're in luck because today we're answering your burning questions. So the mayor can vote. I do not believe the mayor can make the motion or second a motion. And I could be wrong. Some of this is going to be based off of information that Otter Creek has in their actual charter. Sometimes in some places, a mayor can have a vote that breaks a tie, but in this situation, that is not the case. So you could see a motion being made by Vice Sim, not seconded by the mayor or potentially maybe seconded by the mayor. It all depends on the aspect of what your rules are in your guidelines, which is your charter. Okay? It's going to be your charter and it's going to be what guidelines and rules are you following for your procedures in your actual council meetings, right? So you're not seeing it because she's not doing it. That doesn't necessarily mean she can't or it means she knows that she can't. One or the other. At this point, I'm not even sure. Phyllis Gamio says, so the state man is telling the council to lie to the federal government. Is he crooked also? There's a lawyer there and she said nothing. Alright, Phyllis, you and I have kindred spirits, no doubt whatsoever. Because when you heard this, it made you uncomfortable. When I heard it, it made me extremely uncomfortable. So let's back up a little bit. Number one, he's not a state man. Okay? He works on the grants. So he's kind of the middle man. Let's say this is Otter Creek and this is the government. He's in the middle saying, hey, government, I want to get this money for Otter Creek, but the money's got to flow through him. He gets a cut, right? So if he's going to get us cut, then he's going to try and get the money to flow so he can get his cut as well. To make it flow, he's going to say this community center is for medical purposes. I'm not okay with that. Phyllis, you're not okay with that. The lawyer said nothing. I guarantee you, you were there, I was there, we both saw lawyer said nothing. Made me extremely uncomfortable that we are actually lying or manipulating to actually get a building built that, um, can't, can't even be afforded by the people currently. Now that doesn't mean thousands of people won't come to Otter Creek. We saw that already with Christmas in the creek. But how are they pumping money into the system to help afford paying the daily expenses of that building? Well, if Otter Creek actually had businesses with thousands of people being flooded in here for Christmas in the creek, all businesses would have made money. Everybody in Otter Creek could have made money during Christmas in the creek. We did not make money. We gave money away. And so other individuals could have made money. Here's the thing, the original grant was for fiber optic for poor communities. I mean, you can say it any way you want to say it. You can say urban, you can say it was underdeveloped, you can, it's poor communities. Okay? Levy County is a poor community. And you go, Jeremy, why are you guys there? Well, easily, because we found what we needed in our business plan. It gets us to all the major cities. We've gone over that before. And we love to help people. So why not be here? But now that fiber optic, there was another grant by the government and Central Electric, Central Florida Electric grabbed that up and put all the infrastructure in. So now there's money that was for fiber optic and now they're going, okay, what do we do with this now? Well, we can put in sidewalks or we can put in a community center. Well, how do we get the community center in? Well, we say people are going to get their shots and they're going to get this. I mean, remember it was COVID money, right? They're going to get vaccines when they're not, they're not. I don't like that. I don't like that it's, it's a manipulation. I don't like that it's a lie. There's been enough corruption and cover up in Otter Creek as it is already. I don't think we need anything else like that. I think there's other ways to do it right. Just say what it's really going to be used for. Cindy Chris says, Russ didn't even look at the flag. Such a disgrace. I noticed that as well. We're pledging allegiance to the flag and Russ isn't even looking at the flag. And you're going, okay, Jeremy, if you noticed that you weren't looking at the flag. Well, I was saying the pledge allegiance and then decided to twist the camera around like this as I continued to say the pledge of allegiance, looking at the flag. Because I wanted to know what everybody else was doing. Because when Russ was sworn in, everybody said he wouldn't even touch the Bible. I wanted to swing the camera around. He's not even looking at the flag that he is so proud that Don, at one point, he says, thank you for serving. And apparently Russell even might have served at one point. We have no confirmation of it, but Don did tell George that he did at one point. But again, we have no confirmation from Russell. And yet he won't even look up at the, the flag. Why? Is, is he, is he embarrassed? Is he guilty? Is he disgraced? That at one point he actually fought for these freedoms and now he's undermining them? Blue Line of Corruption writes, if I say I don't qualify, can I pay for it for myself? Speaking of the fiber optic coming in. And install the fiber optics too for my home or my business? Well, yes, that answer is yes. So there was an early sign up for anybody who wanted fiber optic coming from Central Florida Electric. So George and I signed up to, not one, two huge gigs, okay? Ninety-nine dollars a month, two gig. George and I only get one gig. That's the most that we can get up north. Two gig for ninety-nine dollars a month. That's upload and download. Now for most people, they only care about download. They care about watching movies, streaming, da, da, da. Two gig is more than enough for an entire family to do that. George and I care about upload because we need the upload speed for YouTube and for live streaming. And so two gig for ninety-nine a month. So George and I already signed up for the ranch house and they'll run all the fiber optic out for ninety-nine dollars a month. And we've already signed up here for the schoolhouse, ninety-nine dollars a month. And you know what? Deanna lives up front. She could actually sign up for herself as well if she wants to. So you can get all of this fiber optic. They had early sign up so they knew exactly how much was going to be on the map. The price increases if you didn't do the early sign up. But my goodness, have you ever heard of two gig up and down speed for ninety-nine dollars a month? Like we're going to have better internet in Florida than anywhere else in the world. Vintage Stuff Lover says, let me get this straight. The proposed community center is supposedly going to be used for COVID vaccination clinics and medical checkups, but that's just a lie to get the money, right? Is, in what way will this community center benefit the town? Alright, so we've kind of covered this already. The cover up to get the money, to get the building. Well, let's ask another question. Where's the building even going to be? So is it going to be in the center of the town so all townspeople can come to it and have a benefit from it? Will be on the outskirts of the town so people have to run to it? We don't even know where this proposed thing is even going to be, let alone what it's going to, how big it's going to be, which again, we were told this last meeting, 150,000 don't go a long way in a building and it does not, especially in a commercialized building. It has to be hurricane proofed as well. Eight hundred and fifty thousand is going to be used up in infrastructure to get utilities there. Your building is going to be ridiculously small. So how's it going to benefit the people? I don't know. I honestly don't know. There's a town hall already. That is a building to benefit the people. How's it used? Pay water bills. Okay? So we use it to pay water bills. We use it for a monthly meeting that nobody shows up to. And, and while I wish more people would show up, I wish the good people, the, the beautiful people of Otter Creek would take their town back from this corrupt regime. Okay? You know, at some point you have to go, whether you like Jeremy, whether you like George, whether you like what the Hales, you've seen what Russ the Suss has done, you've seen what Don the Con has done, you've seen what Mary Mary Mathis Scary has done. And at some point you gotta go, I don't care if I like Jeremy or not, I don't care if I like George or not, I don't care if I like what the Hales or not, I don't care if I like YouTube or not. What they've done is wrong and we've got to take the town back. We've got to take our town back and start doing right. Remember Hudson mentality, actually caring about people, doing things for people, loving on people. We need the Hudson mentality to saturate the town of Otter Creek. Will community center do that for us? No, but the right people will. Maria asked the question, when you second something, doesn't it mean you're in favor? So how do you vote against it then? So we kind of already touched on this Maria. So for example, if, um, if I really wanted to eat your cake that you brought to Christmas in the creek, I'd be like, I make a motion, we eat the cake right now. And then George goes, I make a motion, we eat the cake right now. You would think that George and I both want to eat the cake, right? Yeah, I mean, it was delicious cake. Maria brought some of the best cake ever, not to mention some of the best food ever. And we've put on what, five, 10, maybe 15 pounds, George? Something around those lines. Because Cynthia brought food, Maria brought food, Kevin brought food, Ryan brought food from barbecues and there are other people. There were many, many other people who brought food, all kinds of snacks and, and the kitchen is still overflowing with food. You would think that they're all for it. But again, this was just a ploy for Don to wreak chaos and havoc in the meeting. As he calls me a hijacker, as I'm trying to get people to see what's really happening in their town with their money, yet he can't even, he, I just, I'm lost at words for Don the Con. He's just, he's just one huge enigma. Michelle Eastlake asked the question, why does Don oppose everything? Okay, well, let's dig into that a little bit. Number one, could be age, right? Certain age, you know, even George and I were going, man, we're getting older. We don't want to become that person that goes, get off my lawn. We want to invite people into activities and events like Christmas in the creek. We don't want to tell people, don't destroy my lawn, which our lawn got destroyed, right? We'll fix it. We'll fix it and we want to invite people back in. So it could be age that he's just, he's just angry, could be angry and bitter. Uh, you know, so other things happen in people's lives, which then spur up other things. So at Don's core, he may be a very angry, very bitter individual. He may have an issue with females in charge. Now you know, I got a lot of females telling me what to do, right? You got George, so I claim I'm in charge and we all know she is in charge. Deanna, uh, there are those that claim that, first, George, is it true that, that I have a problem with all older women? Like some people claim because of Mary Mary and Marilyn and, no, no.
It just so happens to be that those two were older.
It just so happens.
The underwear bandit wasn't old.
Oh, underwear bandit wasn't, and we've never really met her.
The girl that gave you a fake hundred dollar bill, she wasn't old.
Oh, she wasn't old either. They're just bad people is what it comes down to.
There's no age limit to accountability.
But we got Deanna and, um, I have her phone number for those who want it, you know? Maybe we'll do a little fundraiser with that. Uh, I'm not saying she's old. I'm just saying she's older than me. And Deanna cracks the whip on me. As a matter of fact, yesterday she was pretending to be our mom, making us take medicine all day, both George and I. And now guess who's sick? Deanna, okay? Now you got patients who's younger, who cracks the whip on me and tells me what to do too. So I mean, I'm sorry, and no doubt Pepper is going to be telling me what to do. I have no doubt whatsoever. And I can guarantee you, I'm going to be like, yes, Pepper, anything you want, Pepper. Okay, Pepper, anything you want. Okay. So, so you have all of that going on. You have at the core, Don just is in a, an opposing person. So anything that isn't Don's way is not the right way. So I often use this analogy in leadership. In leadership, we are not to micromanage, we are to actually lead and we're to cast vision and say, this is the direction we're going. So if we're at point A, let's say it's Otter Creek and we're going to go to point B, let's say we're going to Orlando, we're going to Disney World. My job as a leader is to say, we're going to Disney World, but I want to give you the freedom to figure out how you're going to get there. So if we were to actually look at the map, you could go this way and get there, you could look this way and get there, you could woo, 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 do loop de loops and get to Orlando, you could go over to Tampa and then run over to Orlando, you could go around in circles, straight through. It doesn't matter how you get there. Not going to micromanage you, but Don wants to micromanage and say, everything has to[1695.92] be Don's way. There is no other way. No, there's a million different ways to get to the same destination if we're going to Disney World. My goal as a leader is to say, let's go. And then your job is to figure out how to get there. But Don's going, no, my job is to say, let's go. And I'm going to tell you how to get there. And if you don't do it that way, I'm going to create complete and total chaos in your life. That's not a fun life to live. I would hate to be married to that man. Sodor Flores has a very unusual question. As a matter of fact, I think he's going for the negative in this. Says, Jeremy, don't you declare all this in your, to your tax man? Why are you so worried? Is it the fact that it will go through to them? I'm a little confused on your thinking here. So what they're referring to is Form six. So let me take this back a little bit. Well, let me answer the first question. Number one, my CPA does all of my taxes and all income and all expenses are reported every year. And that is not the exact same thing as Form six. As a matter of fact, Form six is very different. It is not your taxes at all, nothing. Form six, you have to declare everything that you own that's over $1,000 and declare everything that you owe that's over $1,000. So that's everything in your life. Your taxes is your income and your expenses for the year, period. All right. So let me ask you this, Sodor. Why are prominent individuals who have served their community for 30 plus years now resigning? Because it is a complete and total invasion of personal and private, private information. I don't need any of your information, or I could turn it on you. If you're not concerned about it, why don't you put all your information out there? Let the entire web take all of your information, take every, all right, okay, I got it. Right now you're going, well, I don't know anything. I don't own it and I don't owe it. All right, well, then you got no concern. You proved my point. The people that have amassed wealth and actually know how to run a business and know how to run a town and know how to run government are actually pulling out. And now you bring in the people who know nothing, who have proven in their life that they can't amass wealth and they can't handle money and they can't do things with that money. And now you're going to put them in a position of oversight of it? Not a very smart move. Jeremy Williams has a, an insightful thought here. He says, I just couldn't help think it, but now, but if Don and Russ got into an actual fistfight, who would win? I kind of think of it as I picture it, it'd be like them old rock'em sock'em's. You remember that, George? Don and, Don and Russ would be like this, couldn't even land, even get close. Be like, oh, just trying to get close. Oh, 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 oh. I could just see Don, huh, huh, huh. And Russ, huh, huh, huh. Neither of them ever landing a single punch. Jane Hedge writes, oh my goodness, either you got way too much sleep, Jeremy, or you haven't had enough sleep in days. Well, Jane, I can share with you that is the later. Getting too much sleep is not my issue. Not getting enough sleep is my issue. And when I filmed that, which you were responding to, I was up around the clock all night and have been for a few nights before that with everything that has been going on with Christmas in the creek and other details of the business as well. So last night I feel like I did okay. How are my eyes, are they saggy, George? We were all a little bit under the weather. When you bring thousands and thousands of people together and you have rain and you're standing out in the rain and you're screaming and you're yelling and everybody's hugging and touching and Merry Christmas and the joy that was there, there's quite a few of us that are a little bit under the weather and we still need some more sleep. Don't worry. I told Deanna, she's taking all next week off. Now George will just let me have the week off. Avocad Man says, all these things you do, do, that you don't really need are costs that are too high for a small community to have to pay back. Make no mistake, you will have to pay it back. Do you really need a community center at that cost to the community? Does Otter Creek need a community center? Well, we could say that Otter Creek didn't need Christmas in the creek either, but it was a huge success. So a community center can do one of two things. They can draw people in, or it's going to create a huge expense that people can't pay for. My, listen, this is a biased opinion, right? This is just Jeremy. This is not, this isn't gospel of what's going to happen. And you have to filter that when you watch videos because there are times I'm wrong. Right, George? All right, a couple of times I'm wrong, but, but I don't believe that the town of Otter Creek in its current capacity and its current situation can handle the expenses of a community center, especially if something happens where Russ the sus gets back into office and becomes mayor again, and they have lawsuit after lawsuit after lawsuit. Listen, I have more paperwork right now because of my public records request that I could have 20 lawsuits going on against Russell and the town right now.[1633.26]